Yeah. Okay. Cool. Nope. Guys, hold on. Let me find a folder. Okay. Good. We're good to go. Good. You're fine. I'm with you. It's recorded. It's in still in my brain. Not long ago. It's a Lucy. Welcome.
Good afternoon. The Gibraltar zoning board of appeals meeting is now called to order. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under one individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Secretary, take the roll, please.
Yes. Harris.
Here.
Markham. McCarthy.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Tefend. Eager.
Here.
So we need a motion to excuse Mr. Markham and Mr. Tefend.
Motion to excuse. Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We need a motion for approval of today's agenda.
We'll make a motion for the agenda.
I'll second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna need approval of the previous ZBA minutes from October 8th. But we need to make an amendment to the language. So it's a little bit clearer to the building department. And Jane is kind enough to give us that wording.
Yeah, so for, this was for a waterfront yard encroachment. And the way that the zoning ordinance is written, it's for the established setback. And since that established setback can move, it's not based off of the set structure of that shed. I'm suggesting that you amend the language so that it reflects the nine feet, 11 inches from the waterfront as shown on the plans. So if you can amend your motion language just to reflect the nine foot, 11 inch setback for that three season room, we'll be achieving the same thing, but we'll be providing the clarity that the building department wants to see.
Okay, thank you. So we're talking about 30579 Island Drive.
Yes.
And it's for the construction of their three season room, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So we're looking at amending the wording to grant a setback of nine feet, 11 inches from the water's edge. And this is for the construction of a three season room.
Yes.
All those make that change in the minutes. We'll need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. So you can make that note in the minutes.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Just to start the meeting off and let everybody know, unfortunately, we only have four members tonight. And so it's gonna require a vote of all, in the affirmative, to pass a variance tonight of all four commissioners. You're more than welcome if you want to table it. That's up to you. There's no additional charges or anything. Or if you want to continue, you're more than welcome. So just to let everybody know. Our under new business tonight. Welcome back. Susan Anadi is at 30730 Bayview. Do you want to tell us what you'd like to do?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My name is Richard Rassell. I'm an attorney. I'm representing Sue's and Anadi and Mr. Sullivan. They are the property owners at 30730 Bayview. My address for the record is 380 North Old Woodward in Birmingham. And that's 48009. And I'm here this evening because I think we have an extremely meritorious request to present to the zoning board. I do a lot of this around Metro Detroit, representing homeowners and property owners and developers and such, working with communities to try to obtain lots of different types of approvals, whether it be site plan approvals or variances or special land use permits, rezonings, whatever it might, it might be. I work effectively only with property owners who show a willingness to try to work with the community, to try to establish something that they fits into the area, fits into the community and works to the betterment of the community. What is, and I hope all of the zoning board members have had a chance to take a look at our letter that we submitted. We submitted the letter, and I just want to make sure I have the exact date, September 3rd of 2024. We've also submitted, along with our letter, obviously, all the site plan documents necessary to show where the house has been relocated. And I want to talk to you about that in a moment. We've also submitted a substantial number of letters from our neighbors, all in support of the project, who all see that this, what we feel is a modest request to this board, presented by the unique shape and topography of this property, presents a unique opportunity and a basis for the granting of a singular variance that will allow this property to be significantly improved. The neighbors are on board for that reason. They understand that this is going to anywhere to the benefit of the neighborhood, not just from a design perspective and from a valuation perspective, et cetera. But, you know, we'll allow Sue and Gary to pull their cars off the road and park them properly in our driveway, consistent with the master plan goal of trying to keep boats, cars off the main streets and thoroughfares of our community here. So number one, I just want to acknowledge a couple of things. We were in front of the zoning board before. First of all, I want to also thank McKenna and the staff here at the city for working very effectively with the applicant on the resubmital, working with them to try to accept plans, get us on the agenda. It's been, you know, a real pleasure working with them professionally. Sue and Gary have had a pleasant experience in that regard, and the staff's been very professional. So I always want to acknowledge that. And they've helped us get here tonight. And when we were here before I was involved, Sue and Gary had a presentation to this, to this board that involved three variances for the home. And that's what this is. This is going to be a residence, not a temporary place. This is going to be where Sue and Gary live. They're gonna move here. They want to build this house. It's very modest. It's 2,300 square feet. It's replacing an existing structure that's been there since the 30s. Sue inherited this through her family. They want to, Sue and Gary want to call Gibraltar their permanent home. They have plans for a very modest structure that will allow them the benefit of living here full time and have enough space so that they can have guests, they can have some number of family members over, they can park their cars off street. But again, 2,300 square feet is the entire scope of this project. And we've worked diligently with our neighbors and with the architect and the builder, and the builder's Charlie Lawler is here. This business is located in the area, grows ill, and does lots of projects in this area and understands the connection to the community here. So when this project was before you, before, there were seven variances requesting, or seven, I'm sorry. It's a seven foot variance. Now, three variances that were requested in connection with the project, and I just want to summarize those for you. There was a front yard setback sod of 12 feet, a side yard setback variance on both sides of 11.2 feet, and a variance in the lot coverage of 43%. So what's happened since then is the homeowner, Sue and Gary, have worked diligently with the architect and have worked with Charlie to try to minimize the variances. And so the variances effectively all been eliminated. So we're here today with just one. It's a seven foot front yard setback variance, the garage. This is the only way we can do this because this lot is very narrow and there's a berm in the back of the property that makes the property unbuildable back there, which forces the property forward. And if you look at the plans, it does show the location of the existing structure and the location, the existing structure is almost in the exact location that we're proposing at. We're pushing just maybe a foot past where the existing structure ended and where we're proposing now. And that's because the, the rear yard berm forces the property forward or forces the improvement forward. So now we're proposing to be just over 18 feet from the street rather than the 25 that's required. But we think this is meritorious for a number of reasons. We fit the uniqueness of the, of the ordinance requirement. This is not a self-created hardship. This is a hardship created by the topography of the property, the narrowness of the lot. And I think that in working with our neighbors, the architect and the builder, and eliminating the side yards and the rear yard and some of the other features that we were thinking about trying to add to this, we've come up with something that is both modest, reasonable, and fits within the idea that in certain occasions, very, variances are allowed to permit a property owner to build something where they have a unique aspect to their request, so that it's, it's not just being applied uniformly across the whole city, but there are exceptions. And this is, we think, a modest and very reasonable exception. My clients have worked very difficult, very diligently to try to minimize this. So when they came back, they were not merely showing up without having listened. They want to try to do the right thing. The neighbors are on board because they see that this is going to improve their neighborhood. This will be, you know, adding value to the neighborhoods with regard to the assessed values in the area. It will provide an excellent comp for others that might be considering selling someday and improves the area. And that's why I think all of the neighbors took the time to support this. We think this is a highly reasonable request. I did go through each of your ordinance factors under the variance test in my letter. And I'm happy to go through those each, but they're in my letter and I don't want to take, I know there are other folks up tonight and I don't have to go through all of them unless you want me to. And obviously then, at that point, I'm, I'm practically somewhat reiterating what's in my letter, and I want to be respectful of the, of the time that everyone has this evening for, for both this request and for others that are on the agenda, so.
Right now, you have a one bedroom. Is the house a one bedroom?
Correct.
And then you're going to?
This is gonna be a two.
A two bedroom with also a bathroom on the upper, although there's a matter of bathroom up there. It's just a small loft.
And this, yeah, and the property's been in Miss Anadi's family since the 1930s, and she inherited it in 2023. So it's important for her to, you know, keep that heritage and keep effectively what is the old footprint, just improving the space. But we are gonna, we are asking you very respectfully for the, for the granting of this modest variance in our characterization. But what, what other questions can we answer for, for you folks this evening? And we did bring Charlie, of course, so that he can answer any kind of building or technical questions. And Sue and Gary are obviously here to answer any questions that you may have.
You know, we kind of covered it at the first meeting. And, you know, I'll speak for myself. I'm very appreciative that you came back with something that was doable. You know, it.
Okay. And we're, we can hear.
We'd much rather have one variance than three.
Right. And, and, you know, I think that was one of the things that we helped Sue and Gary focus on when they came to see us, just to see if they'd come at the process wrongly the first time, or if they could, if they could get any aid in going at it and, and more maybe document of what the ordinance factors were a little bit as it relates to the hardship. And I think hopefully we've been a help in that regard. And, and that's what we like to do, is we try to help move projects along if we can do that, and counsel people to work with the community and their neighbors and try to fit in. And I, I hope that you'll see that this fits in, and we appreciate your time.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
At this time, would anybody like to speak? Sure. Just name and address, please.
Okay. Steve Melmston, 30740 Bayview. I'm the neighbor to the south. And I've seen their plans and, you know, I'm in full support of what they want to do as a neighbor. Actually, it'll benefit me. Before the tornado, remember the tornado?
Oh, yeah.
There were big, beautiful blue spruces there that lined the driveway. It was like a wall, and I had all this privacy. And then the tornado came through, blew the trees down, and I feel exposed in my driveway, you know, to Bayview. Not badly, but I did like the privacy. And what they want to do with their garage is perfect for me because it, it blocks my driveway from clear view coming down the road. I can hide my little projects I work on, things like that. So as a neighbor, I've seen the plans and they're really good. And I support them.
All right, great. Thank you. Appreciate that. At this time, anybody else? All right, we'll close the public opinion. Really, the bottom line is it's a non-conforming lot. It's pie-shaped. And, you know, you really, I guess, can't expect somebody to build a one-bedroom house anymore.
Correct.
And from the 1930s and to now, it's a long time, and the house is gonna need some love. So, you know, we're talking about a seven-foot variance, which is much more digestible than the three.
The three.
I just got a garage question for you guys. As a fan of garage myself, for mine, are you gonna, are you gonna be happy with, with the garage? I mean, you're gonna get your vehicles in okay and be able to work on them?
We'll be able to park them inside. Those are our main goals, to be able to park them in the garage.
Okay. Good.
We have two vehicles plus a golf cart. So trying our best to keep everything inside the garage.
Right, right. That's fair.
Right now, you can't fit the car.
Yeah.
Okay. Questions? Need a motion to grant the variance for the construction of a new home, providing a seven-foot setback?
I will make the motion to, to grant the variance.
Secretary, you want to call the roll?
Yep. Harris.
Yes.
Markham. McCarthy.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Tefend. Eager.
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda for tonight under new business is Mr. Buford, Von Buford. Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you. Before he leaves, I want to put that guy on retainer to have him speak for me. He's a very eloquent speaker, unlike myself, so.
Don't say that. You're doing fine.
All right. Well, I'm here to ask for a height variance on a garage. Excuse me. I worked with Jane and Carson at McKenna. Positive thoughts with that. We came to an agreement on being able to build the garage, to turn the other garage into living space, which I was asking for a variance on that the last time I was here. So I worked with an architect. He, he drew up the plans for a garage that I wanted. And I know that the height maximum is 15 feet. I'm looking to get 16 feet, five and three quarters inches to do what I want to do. So I'm asking for a variance of one foot, five and three quarters inches. Surrounding my property, in my packet, I left you guys this picture. I don't know if you saw it.
Yep.
Surrounding where that garage is going to be, it's right here, is my neighbor's garage, a shed, my neighbor's garage, my neighbor's garage, my neighbor's house, and my house. And all of those are two-story. Every one of them surrounding there is two-story. I don't believe that my garage, I didn't measure every one of my neighbor's properties, but I don't believe that my garage is gonna be taller than any other building next to it. So it's not, it's not gonna impede on anybody's view or, it's, it's not gonna be a detriment to anybody else's property in my belief. This is gonna be built on a full-size lot that I own on Gerald. I'm on the corner of Adams and Gerald, and this, I'm combining the lots as a part of this project. And this garage is gonna be built on the Gerald lot, right next to my house. And as I expressed the last time in, in the meeting that we had, my first thought was to extend the existing garage that I had, but I can't do that because I have a DTE easement running right along next to my garage. So I can't, that's kind of off the table. I tried to do that, and I don't even have six feet to do that with, so. Again, I worked with, I worked with an architect. He drew up the plans that are submitted in the packet there. And what I want to do as part of the hardship is, we, we lost everything and we were devastated as part of the flood when we, when Gibraltar's sewers backed up. Everything that's in our basement was destroyed. And I want to put like a loft or a mezzanine, if you will, in this new garage to store all of the stuff that would be in, in the basement. And the height, the height requirement is so that I don't have to crawl on my knees to get up there. I want to, I want to put a stairway up there. It's definitely not gonna be living space. But I want, I'm six foot four, and I want enough space where I don't have to crawl. And that's basically it.
So I remember the last time we talked, it was more about getting your truck in because of the.
The, there's only going to be a loft or, I, I don't really know if I want to call it a loft or a mezzanine inside the garage, but it's only going to be in half of it. It's only gonna be in the first, in the back 25 feet.
Yeah, it looks like on, on your plane, you have a dotted line.
That's correct.
That you're talking about, so you're only gonna do storage in the back half and then the front will be for your.
And the architect was, he did not put the stairway on there, but the stairway's gonna be on the back wall going, and it's gonna go from the west to the east to go to the middle, so I can walk up to where the peak is. That was, that was my intention.
I didn't do the calculations, but are we okay on lot coverage?
Yes, Mr. McCarthy, I got that right here.
Call me Jeff.
Jeff, okay. My very first visit with McKenna, is it okay if I approach?
Sure.
My very first visit with McKenna, I, I did this, and I asked them if my calculations were correct. And he looked at them that day in City Hall before any of this started. And I had, oops, I, I had, the garage is a 30 by 60, it's gonna be 1,800 square feet.
Did you say 30 by 60?
Yes.
Is that a pole barn?
No, it's gonna be a stick though.
I mean, it's the size of a pole barn, though. It's humongous. 30 by 60s.
I have two, 2,384 feet left over, so I'm gonna be under the 40%.
But it's, it's an empty lot, though, right?
It's an empty lot.
All right, now, is this, this is still contingent on you doing lots, correct?
Joining the lots. And I put the.
I see this, correct. This is, this is the paperwork you're gonna submit to the planning board.
Exactly right. If I, if I get these rules, then those two properties will be combined. That's the very first thing.
Then it'll be one property.
One property.
And you'll have one garage on one property.
One garage on one property.
Converted to living space, correct?
Correct. And Carson, is it Carson Clausen? Carson Clausen came out to my house and we walked through the garage and he showed me what I needed to do to make that happen.
Because I remember that was one of the things, the last time you were here, was there was, that would be two garage structures on, one on one and one on the other, so you couldn't just build a single garage.
Exactly right.
And then it would be two buildings, and it was.
And at that time, I wasn't not allowed to do that because I, at that time, I didn't know that, I was asking for a variance for putting the ex, once I combined the lot, to put the extra garage on there.
Correct. And it's only one outbuilding.
Right.
Well, when you combine the two lots, that's gonna make it, that's gonna change the whole structure, right? Like lot coverage? Because now you're gonna have one lot.
My calculations were.
Including them too?
Including the cover, combining.
Thank you for answering.
We, and I know the, each variance is based on the individual property. We did grant a similar variance to, not far from him, for about the same height because of the flooding problem.
Right behind Parsons.
Oh, behind the, but yeah, he was behind the school. Parsons, behind Parsons, correct.
Rick, Rick Novak.
Yeah, Rick Novak.
I actually wired that garage.
Did he finish it?
He did finish it.
Oh, okay. Or started?
And he probably told you all about this, then.
No, he didn't. I, I started this process before he did, actually, and I'm.
One of the things is, is you mentioned it. You kind of brought it up about living space and walkable space, right? We don't want it to be converted to that. We're not saying that you're gonna lie to us. I don't think you are.
No.
But if you sell the house, what's the next guy gonna do? Wow, look at all this room up here. Finish the walls, rent it out, got rent going. Now we got five, six cars parking on the side. I know where you live, you know, I've stopped by your garage sales quite often.
Have you?
Absolutely. You always got a nice rifle for sale.
Well, then you know how short my garage was.
I do, I do.
Yeah.
I do. I'm not, I'm, I'm on your side. I'm a resident just like you. We all are.
Yeah.
But I do remember that a lot of times with these accessories that add them up, you didn't add them together, but you did, so, thank you for that. But in, in, and also a note to that other one, we made a deal with him on bringing it to where it was, he still had to hunch, so it couldn't be converted to living space. But we worked with him on his height restriction.
Yeah, we got him, I mean, he wanted quite a bit, and we got him down to a one, one and a half foot variance. It's, you know, we can't, as a board, dictate the future, but, you know, if somebody, if he sells the house and they, you know, it's up to the building department.
I know, I know, I know.
You know, whatever they do and.
It's, it's, in the end, it's really not gonna be big enough to do that because I'm gonna have attic trusses and with a four-foot knee wall on each side, I'm only gonna have 16 feet. going to have 16 feet. 16, it's going to be a 16 by 25 when it's done, for that storage space.
With the stairwell going right up the middle.
Stairway going right up the middle. You're not, you're not going to be able to do living space there.
What's your plans on heating for that? Just curious.
I was planning on doing a multi-zone mini-split. For, you're talking about the new garage?
Garage, yeah.
Yeah. A multi-zone mini-split was my intention, but now that I've seen the prices, I'm not sure if that's what I want to do, so.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming. At this time, anybody in the audience, any comments, pros or cons? I guess let the...
Gentlemen, I'd like to add, I talked to all my neighbors about this, and every single one of my neighbors is totally on board with it. That one neighbor sitting here right now, she's on board. She lives in the store.
Welcome. So let the minutes reflect. There was no opposition. You know, again, you know, we kind of have a plan that we all kind of got together, and I think, you know, it's a doable request.
Yeah, it's give and take, um...
Yeah, you know, it's not 10 feet or five feet or, you know, but...
Plus with the requests we made, you know, combine the lots.
Yeah, and, you know, the flooding is an issue, and...
We all know that.
It's going to be, you know, so it's, you know, people need additional storage space. It's a fact of life.
And how, you said you're converting your current garage into living space, correct?
That's correct.
How do we, how does accountability, none of our business?
None of our business, okay. We'll leave that to the city fathers. But yeah, we're fine. If nobody has any other questions, we can just, need a motion to approve or deny?
Are we making this contingent on the joining two lots? I know the paperwork's in. Is it not complete yet? Sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Joining the two lots, is that complete or not complete? It's just, you have application in?
It's based on what we decided.
It's based on what you, because I found out from the city that once you combine them, you can't uncombine them. So I was, if I can't do it, then I was just going to sell the lot.
Yeah, gotcha. So I didn't know if we, for our motion, if we needed to add that in there. This is contingent on joining the two lots, I guess, maybe Jane.
I think that's already in Jane's paperwork.
Yeah. Because then if we say yes, it's, we'll give you the variance, and then you don't go join them, join the lots, and we gave you the variance to build a garage on it. You know, I just want to make sure we're covered on all our ends.
Each contingent to each other, almost.
Yeah, exactly. It's kind of like a...
Checking in the egg.
Exactly.
I'm going to do that before I even start.
Okay.
Anything.
Yeah, just to add extra peace of mind, the building department's not going to approve permits for a garage on a single lot, so you can add it in as a condition of your variance. The variance is only specifically for the height, but it will not be approved from the building department until the lots are combined.
Okay. I guess if that's the case, then I'm not worried about adding it, then.
So what we're looking at, then, is a motion to deny or grant the variance, the 1 point or 1 foot, 5 inches and three-quarter, make it 1, 5 and 6, or 1 foot, 6 inches?
I'll make the motion to, to grant 1 foot, 5 and 3/4 inches.
And contingency on joining the lots in the planning commission.
I'll second that.
And when you're ready, we can call the roll.
All right. Harris?
Yes.
Markham?
McCarthy?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Tefend?
Eager?
Yes.
Congratulations on the construction of your new garage. Yeah, thank you for coming. Thank you for all your efforts.
Your new factory. That's a factory. You're going to put a pickle line in there. Start making steel out of that thing. 60 foot long, you'd be able to run trucks in.
Better garage.
That's what I can't wait for. Why do you think I approved it? I've seen your garage now. I see what you put out there now. I can only imagine when you got a big old pole barn in there, what you're going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.
Under unfinished business, Christine and Timothy Gagarowicz, did I get it right?
Close enough.
All right. Thought about it all day. You want to tell us?
I had to wait there for that whole thing, just to...
Sorry, it's kind of interesting.
I know you did some work. You did some homework.
Yes.
So you want to share with us?
Yes. We submitted a new plan for a deck that is 41.2% backyard coverage. That includes the stairs, so not to bring it to the seawall, and we're looking for approval on that.
So last month, there was a approval for a three-season room. But this size deck would allow us to do is have a three-foot walkway between the three-season room and the back property line for access from the side yard.
We came down from 25%, correct? Wasn't that the last one he asked?
65%. So we came down from 6...
Oh, yeah, 25% variance, what we were asking.
Yeah, yes.
So down to a 1.2. We're looking for a 1.2%, correct?
Correct.
Donald Trump would say it's huge. Huge, huge, with a U, no H.
Almost, we expected this, didn't we? Didn't we say, didn't we talk about this?
You, I was under the impression there was a little more work for us to do to try to accommodate not such an egregious variance.
Right, right, right. I do remember that. I don't remember what I ate yesterday, but I remember that.
So we're, we're looking at 1.2? 1.2%.
Yeah. I, obviously, it came down extreme amount, and it's more than fair. I'll make the motion to grant the 1.2% coverage variance.
I'll second it.
So the motion is to grant a variance of 1.2%? 2% on the lot coverage for the construction of a deck. Rear yard coverage.
Okay.
I'm going to change, I want to, that's one of those tough ones.
Of deck. And then who seconded it? Harris?
Blake.
It was eager. Okay, I had it right.
No railings, huh? That's allowed?
Yeah, two foot, uh, height.
First of all, then, okay.
You want to take the roll, call for the vote?
Harris?
Yes.
Markham?
McCarthy?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Tefend?
Eager?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing some, your work and bringing it down. We appreciate it. Thank you.
That was a quick one.
Yeah. Of course, I'd wait till the end for the quickest one.
We just need a, is that it?
Von's going to have a beautiful garage, you guys. I just hope you guys know he is. I'm serious. I know that guy is...
A public comment.
Very meticulous.
Yeah, at this time, any public comment? Is, while you're here, is that, is that some language we can clean up on that, you know, lot, rear lot coverage? You know, I was kind of thinking of if we just did, you know, 40%, includes decks, you know, accessory buildings, and it's just one blanket thing. And whether it has an overhang on it or if it doesn't, it's just flat 40%. Is that doable or is that?
Yeah, I think it's doable. The intention right now, I think, is to make sure that you're not having those decks that take over the entire, just, they're just worried about that rear yard where the decks are. So there's other ways to accomplish that. And I think looking at total lot coverage of just everything, pavers, decks, accessory buildings, is important, and you could accomplish that balance by a total lot coverage as well. For the sake of today and their, you know, language, and it gets confusing, too, because it's sometimes waterfront yard coverage versus rear yard coverage, and so cleaning that up will definitely be necessary.
Yeah, because I blew it last week, or last time they were here, because I considered it 40% of the whole lot, and it wasn't. And so, okay, thanks. If there's no other comments, we just need a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Meeting's adjourned. Oh, thanks for coming.
Hey, that's how it goes. Sometimes you can make these meetings, sometimes you can't when you're volunteering. What more can you ask for, right? It's like, this is volunteer...